Planning Board, and we'll remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. We have a pretty full agenda. We have A&R plans for 161 Milk Street and 220 Turnpike Road. We have Planning Board recommendation for street acceptance at Cook Farm Road, continuation of public hearing for 165 Flanders, vote to approve a de minimis change for 180 Turnpike, continuation of public hearing to modify the commercial component for Village Commons at One Gleason, discussion on existing special permit and possible enforcement for One Gleason, security bond release for 128 Turnpike Road, modification to site plan decisions for 54, 60, and 64 Otis, and a vote to return unneeded project escrow funds for Six Billows Road. We're going to take up the A&R plans first, as well as the site plan decision for 180 Turnpike Road. So Jenny, any comments before we start? Okay. If you could just name and title whoever's speaking for. Great.
Good evening. Randy Waterman from WDA Design Group, and also Saloni Chada from our office, who is working on her master's degree in landscape architecture. So she's been working on both of these, most of all these projects tonight. And Mark Johnson from MA Restorations is the applicant for this project. So the plan that you see up on the screen right now is the current subdivision plan for these properties. The lot on the left side of this drawing has frontage on Milk Street, 460 feet of frontage on Milk Street, and that's the one that everybody probably knows there's an old beat-up building on it. That was a skating rink from 40 some odd years ago that's still there. So that lot currently has 3.88 acres, and it's entirely located in the Highway Business District. And then the second lot that is shown on this plan that was also, both of these were created back in 1980, that plan is, has all of its frontage on Route 9. It has 400 feet of frontage on Route 9, and that lot has 4.75 acres. And there are no existing above-ground structures on that site. There is a, remains of an old paved driveway that connects out, but no buildings or anything on that site. So those are the two existing lots that were created back in the 1980s. They are two separate owners. They historically were in the deeds of Fafford Company, Fafford Earthworks Construction Company. And right now, they're currently under two separate owners, both realty trusts. Polini Loam owns the, the building lot at Milk Street, and then Lyman Street Realty Trust owns the lot that fronts on Route 9. So those are the two, and like I say, they're both, both located within the Highway Business District. The second plan is the, that's the new A&R plan, this plan, and very similar to the original plan. We've made a couple of minor tweaks. So this plan, the lot that fronts on Milk Street, still has the same 100, oh, sorry, 460 feet of frontage along Milk Street, but because of the unique sign by law in town and trying to have a sign that is out on Route 9 for the, this lot, so that the applicant can advertise their business out there, because we're trying to keep people off of Milk Street and not have them come down and try and figure out how to get into the site that way, we're asking to put us, we will be asking to put a pylon sign out on Route 9. And so that's why we ran the frontage out to the street. That has 126 feet of frontage for this new lot, and that new lot is 6.28 acres. And I'm sorry, the, yeah. And, and so the existing, you can see the roller rink building that's still there on Milk Street, and then there'll be a new building on this lot that is under some site plans that we have submitted to the board for their review. But the really, the big change is that we've made this lot a little bigger, and it has legal frontage now on Turnpike Road in order to allow the sign in that area. Let's see, the second lot is the one out on Route 9. That lot got smaller than on the original plan, and so that lot is now 3.28 acres, and it has 274 feet of frontage. So that's the original 400 minus that 126 that were given to the lot on Milk Street. So basically, the Milk Street lot becomes a through lot by having frontage on two streets, but it needs to have the minimum of legal frontage on both streets. And so that's why it's done like this. But really, the only function of it was to, to have legal frontage on the street for a sign out of Route 9, so. But both lots conform to zoning. Both lots are located entirely when the highway, and within the Highway Business District. And so the applicant is really just having us do the plan now. As I mentioned, we've submitted site plans for the board's review, so at least now the lot lines will match with the site plans that we've submitted, so that we don't have lot lines shown crossing through buildings on our, on our proposed site plans.
Any questions from the board on this? Any comments, Jenny?
No comments.
I mean, it looks fine to me. It's, as far as an A&R goes, I mean, obviously, we'll have questions once the site plan comes in, but for now, is there a motion? I know we had a draft motion.
I make a motion to endorse the A&R plan entitled Approval Not Required Plan 220 Turnpike Road and 161 Milk Street, Westboro, Mass., Worcester County, dated August 17, 2023, drawn by WDA Design Group.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero. We'll sign that at the end of the, actually, we're going to author, hopefully authorize Jenny to sign that for us.
Oh, that's right, yes.
We'll take a vote on that later in the meeting.
Okay. We'll get her first officially signed plan.
I don't know how that'll work, because if we take that vote after this vote, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Technical details, thank you.
And Randy, you're also here for 180 Turnpike?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to go straight into that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mark.
So I think the board is familiar with this property from the time we spent working on the site plans. This is 180 and 182 Turnpike Road. We presented site plans for Hyundai dealership at this location, and since that time, we had come back to the Planning Board to do Approval Not Required Plan to remove the center lot line between those two lots where the Hyundai building actually is. During that process, the applicant realized there was a small section of pavement up on Park Street that would affect their total open space coverage numbers. So we had to do a little land trade with the owner of the property, Blue Ocean, that owns the property at 208 Turnpike Road, that's on the corner of Turnpike and Park Street. So that was shown on the A&R plan that we had you review and sign at the last meeting. And so what we're doing as a result is, the site plans that you approved under site plan review for the Hyundai dealership, they need some modifications based on the lot line that we changed to Park Street. And then in order to meet open space requirements, we have to remove some of the parking on the site itself. And I know, I'm sure certainly the board recalls that we had quite a few extra surplus spaces on site at the requirement of Hyundai. So we'll, we'll be removing 19 more of those spaces, and I can walk you through those, where those are. But these six sheets that I've presented and submitted for, we're asking as a de minimis change to the site plans, these are the ones that change as a result of either that lot land swap at Park Street, or the parking on the site in prop, you know, the proper part of the site where the building is. So I can, if you want to go back to that first one, I'll just walk you through. So basically, this one, the, the frontage of that long neck where the railroad tracks were, you know, 100 years ago, that used to run all the way up to Park Street, and so we've transferred a small piece of that through the A&R. It has not gone to the registry yet, but there's a piece that will be transferred to Blue Ocean, and in that, we have reserved with them the requirement to provide that bicycle trail easement to the town, and that is shown on the set of A&R plans that you signed at the last meeting. So we're just showing on this plan that that piece that went to Park Street is no longer on the site, so that's reason that that's bubbled, and that other little rectangle piece comes to the Hyundai site. So that's the only change on this sheet. And then as we jump down to the site itself, we really just went through the approved set of site plans and tried to say what changed anywhere on these latest plans. So most of it's very minor. This one, there was a small viewport down in the bottom of the sheet that showed that little neck going out to Park Street. So again, we removed that from the plans, because that's no longer applicable. The next sheet, this is our layout materials plan, and this one, on this sheet, you can really see where the parking changed. So down in the lower left-hand side of the parking, of the site plan, we had some parking spaces, five of them, that were right next to the fuel storage area, and then there were another 14 spaces that ran up the left side of the property. We thought these were the closest ones to the abutting condominium development that we could actually remove and would have a minor, minor impact on the site. And in total, there's still quite, quite a number of surplus parking beyond what's required by code. So again, this plan on the layout materials, this is just showing which red bubbled is the, where we'd be removing pavement from the site. So basically, the five spaces down near the fuel storage, the 14 spaces that run up on the left, and then we took two feet off those next spaces that go up to Route 9, just in order to make the open space coverage work and not have to remove more spaces and hack up the site anymore, so. But that, that, by doing that, and with the change at Park Street, this would now have its full 60% open space requirement. Up on the right hand, I'll just go back for one sec. Halfway up on the right-hand side, you can see that table is bubbled, and that is really the, just the table that shows how many parking spaces there were, that were required by code, and how many there are now. So the site, after we remove these 19 spaces, will still have 225 surplus above what's required by zoning, so it's still way, way in, in excess of what is the minimum requirement. Next sheet, this is the grading and drainage plan. Essentially, you can see over on the left again, the bubbled areas where we are removing the 19 total spaces. We did not change the grading in these areas, because the grading was designed to be essentially flat through those parking areas. And so we thought, again, this would be a great place to have a little more snow storage, since we're removing pavement. It will be covered with loam and seed, and so it will be a green space in the future, but, so really, we didn't change the grading even on these plants. And the next sheet, utilities plan, there are no utilities in this area that are affected by the changes, so that was fairly simple. We didn't really have to go back and redesign any utilities or change anything significant. And the next sheet, this is our planting plan. You, as you recall, we had some landscape materials on the slope to the left of the property, just to the west of the parking lot, between us and the Currie Copy Center, and we, we decided that we'd really just leave all that landscaping right in place. It's a little higher up the slope, so it buffers more to the abutter. And that way, that flat, that flat area that we have that you can see is shaded, those were areas that were supposed to be, some of those can be used for snow storage, and it increases the green space as well. So we thought that was, you know, ideal, just to leave those. The board had, I think, concerns at one of the meetings about moving some of that landscaping down on the south end of this removal where the five spaces were, because if we have snow storage there, you didn't want us moving the landscape into it. So we really left the landscape out a little bit, so that you have a larger area of snow storage. And then the last sheet, oh, that was the last sheet. So really, that's it. So basically, we just, again, to make the open space work on the site, we had to remove parking. Those were the spaces that were selected. We looked at the spaces directly behind the building, but all of those have that encased concrete drainage system under the parking lot, so removing the parking on the surface doesn't add us any green space, so it didn't make sense. So these, we really thought, give everybody the best bang for the buck, increases the green space on site, and really is a, you know, overall, it's a pretty minimal change in the big picture.
Any questions from the board? Randy, I know I had somebody recently express concern that the 20-foot wide easement, well, it's enough for the trail. It may not be wide enough to actually build the trail because of grading issues along there. I know you're pretty familiar with the trail, having been the consultant on that. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, the easement that we provided all the way through here on the A&R plan, it's actually a 20-foot permanent easement, and then there's a 10-foot construction easement on both sides.
There is.
So you actually have 40 feet, and that was what was recommended by the peer review consultant when we were going through site plan review, is that you get full 20. But 20, the good thing is that at the center of this area, you have the area where the railroad tracks were. So you have a flat area that in most cases is 20 feet now, that's crushed stone and gravel, so it's in great shape, other than the little bridge that's missing, the cattle crossing. So you could, you know, the trail's going to be 12 feet wide, and it's either going to have two or three foot shoulders, so you should be able to fit it all in the 20 feet. But in areas where maybe it's a little tight, you have 10 feet on both sides to help with that off grading. So it is shown as a total of 40 feet on that approved A&R plan.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how to respond to that person, so I just wanted to get some clarification, and I think that makes a lot of sense to me. So that was my only question.
Can I just ask a question building off of that? The construction easement, is that going to allow for grading, or is that more for just like access and, you know?
No, no, it's, it's a full, for anything, any construction that's required to build the, the whole system.
Yep. Okay, there's no other questions? Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Jenny, any comments?
I just had one comment that I included in my memo about revising condition number 21 to make sure that it reflects the issuance of the two easements, since now the property owner at 208 Turnpike is involved. And additionally, have the board consider revising the language to have the easements done prior to the issuance of the building permit, rather than the certificate of occupancy.
Are you comfortable with that?
So I caught the last one was to have the easement, what, was it recorded prior to?
Prior to the building permit issuance.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've talked to the applicant, I think, after our last meeting, and they agreed to that condition, and then the earlier?
And then also reference the easement for 208 Turnpike. It's not part of this for, this site plan decision, that property in particular, but I know that we had discussed it about obtaining that easement also prior to the issuance of the building permit.
But you wouldn't update that on this set of drawings for 208, now that we've taken that land away? And we could draw it on this set of site plans, but, I mean, it's on a separate lot that is shown, that will be shown on the recorded easements as soon as they go to the registry.
It was shown on the A&R, yes, but this site plan decision, I was saying that I want the conditions to also reference that that easement for the 208, as shown on the A&R plan, would also be received prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Is Marshall, is Marshall? I was gonna say, I don't control when they close, so, but I, I think the idea is to do it all at once, but I, I'll let the master talk about that.
I'm sorry, I had another meeting at 6:00 in Northborough, so I get it as quickly as I could.
Just name Marshall.
Sorry, Marshall Gould, representing TTHY, and Randy and I have both been involved in the transfer of, or exchange of properties, and Deb Penta, the owner of Blue Ocean Capital, is aware of it. The only thing we are not yet aware of is whether the transfer to Blue Ocean is going to precede or the creation of the easement, or whether it will take place after. I'm hoping that it will be able to be done before the transfer, but if you want to put it in the decision that an easement, all, whether it's from one property owner or two, will be all the way up to Park Street, we are fine with that. I just don't know whether it will be from two separate owners, or whether it will be from one owner. But in accordance with Jenny, what we had talked about when we met here, absolutely, it's going to go all the way up to Park Street, however the board wants to do it. And we agreed, more than what your present decision states, that until the town gets the complete easement all the way up to Park Street, there will be no building permit granted.
Right, I, I think we're, we just want to make sure that whether it comes from two owners or from one owner, that it's done prior to building.
Building permit for this.
Correct.
Right, and I, and if you're comfortable with that, I think the language that Jenny suggested in the motion.
We are.
We'll read the motion, and I'll give you a chance to comment on the motion if you've, did you get a copy of the draft motion? We want to give you.
I don't think so.
Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up is, I don't remember how many years ago, but I think I gave you a copy. Some members of this board will remember when Carmax came in, that was the beginning of the easement that we're now going to be extending out to Park Street. So it's going to be substantially similar to that one. I had originally written one, and then unfortunately, that's when I came down with cancer, and I was out of work for a while, and town council with my client and their in-house council had agreed to the final wording of an easement, and I saw it after it was complete, and I thought it was fine. Town council thought it was fine. So what we've said is it will be substantially similar to that easement, that it gave the town what it needed, and we'll just continue it.
And that, and the easement language will be sent to town council for review? My concern was that the original site plan approval only, or it showed the easement all the way to the end of, I think it's Park Street.
Correct.
And with this revised site plan, now that you're parcelling off that piece of property, we just want assurance that that easement will still be processed as part of this.
It will, it, and I don't want to put all of our documents out publicly, but Blue Ocean Capital, represented by an attorney, Joshua Lee Smith, I think I showed you, and I showed Fred, our agreement does provide that it is subject to the requirement that either we or the grantee, if it's done after the exchange, will provide the easement to the town of Westboro for the B-Walt Trail. Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, I, again, I think the only concern might be that that has, that easement has to be in place prior to building permit.
And my client has confirmed they're okay, and that's why I came to just verify that.
Anything else?
No, that was my only comment.
Okay. We have a draft, draft motion if somebody's ready to make that, or if there's any other questions? No, okay.
I make a motion to modify the findings of the site plan decision dated January 17, 2023, to include reference to the modified site plan included in the application for de minimis site plan modification request. The reference plan that is the basis of this decision is the plan dated August 29, 2023, prepared by WDA Design Group, prepared by TTHY Westboro LLC, comprising six pages. The motion also includes modification of condition number one of the site plan decision for 180 and 182 Turnpike Road, dated January 17, 2023, to read the following, to read as follows. The proposal plans to acquire the recording of the approval not required plan, the A&R, endorsed by the Planning Board on August 22, 2023, to accommodate the building and site improvements. Further, condition number 21 shall be modified to read as follows. The applicant shall provide the town with a public access easement for a multi-use trail to support the Boston Worcester Airline Trail, B-Walt, along the former Boston Worcester Trolley Line right-of-way contained upon the project site. The easement shall grant the town the right to construct the B-Walt Trail for the purposes of pedestrian travel by foot, or skiing, and for persons with disabilities assistance apparatus. No other motorized access should be permitted, except for the emergency response vehicles and machines and maintenance vehicles associated with maintaining the B-Walt. The reference easements are shown on the A&R plan endorsed by the Planning Board on August 22, 2023, and include the easement on the property which will be conveyed to 208 Turnpike Road. Both the B-Walt easement of 208 Turnpike Road. Both the B-Walt easement of 208 Turnpike Road and 180-182 Turnpike Road shall be prepared by the applicant for the town's review and acceptance prior to the issuance of building permit for the project site. Further, the proposed modification stated above is consistent with the approval issued by this decision and the purposes intended of the original condition, and therefore a public hearing is not required. This modification does not change or remove any other finding or condition that is part of the original site plan approval for TTHY Westboro LLC.
I'll second that. Any discussion of the motion? Marshall, I know you just saw that. Do you have any comments?
We're fine.
All right. All those in favor? That's five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Randy, are you here for One Gleason as well?
Brooke.
Right, can we just skip to the Otis, because those will be quick?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
We're going to move to 54 Otis, modification of the site plan decision, as well as a modification to the site plan decision for 60 and 64 Otis. I think we can discuss this all together.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Reiman Bronstein. We're here this evening because we're closing out the existing special permits, I'm sorry, site plans for the two sites, and one of the conditions dealt with the easement out front and the creation of the pathway. We're still doing the easements, but the actual construction is part of the Massworks grant now. They're going to coordinate that, so the condition still has, at least as to one of them building it, so we're trying to get that off the site plan approval decision so that we could close out the site plan. But it's going to be built, and we're doing the easements, so.
This is very similar to the one we just had last meeting for Cold Harbor. Jenny, any comments?
No other comments. I think Mr. Buckley summarized it well, and it's really just cleaning up the decision. I know we talked about it last time, that decision possibly not having this issue, but I believe it's the 60 and 64 Otis Street that actually had two contradicting conditions as part of this. One stated that they did not have to construct the sidewalk, and one stated that they did. So this is really just cleaning up to make sure that it's clear that they are not constructing the sidewalk.
Any questions for the board? All right, we want to, who wants to make a motion on this?
I make a motion to modify condition number 13 of the site plan decision for 54 Otis Street dated May 3, 2022, to remove the language that would require the applicant to construct the sidewalk along the property frontage. The new language for condition number 13 shall read, as contemplated in the B-Walt Multi-Use Trail Feasibility Study and the town's Otis Street Corridor Study prepared by MDM Transportation Consultants, Inc., dated September 2021, the corridor study, the applicant shall grant an easement to the town in a form and substance reasonably acceptable to the applicant and town. Further, the proposed modification, as stated above, is consistent with the approved issued by this decision and the proposes, and the proposes and intent of the original condition, and therefore a public hearing is not required. This modification does not change or remove any finding, any other findings or condition as part of the original site plan approval for Atlantic Management Corporation.
Second.
Okay, any discussion of that motion? I just wonder, I was trying to find the original condition 13.
Which one?
See what other language. I'm just wondering if the applicant shall grant an easement for construction of the B-Walt, or do we even need to reference that? Is it just obvious?
I'll, I'll pull up that condition. Hold on.
We still have the obligation to do the easement for the construction.
Oh, I know, I just don't know if this makes it clear what the easement's for. The applicant shall grant an easement to the town in form and substance reasonably acceptable to the applicant and town. Maybe I'm overthinking it.
Well, I think since it says, as contemplated in the B-Walt Multi-Use Trail Feasibility Study, et cetera, I think that language really clarifies it enough so that we know what we're talking about.
I am comfortable with the language.
Okay.
And like the prior hearing, the easement will have the construction aspect to it, so it could be...
All right, we have a motion in a second then. There's no further discussion. All those in favor? That's five to zero. Regarding 60-64 Otis Street, is there any further comments?
Same issue.
Jenny, anything further?
No further comments.
Do we have a motion on 60-64 Otis?
I make a modify, I make a motion to modify condition number 10 of the site plan decision for 60 and 64 Otis Street dated November 4, 2021, to remove the language that would require the applicant to construct the sidewalk along the property frontage. The new language for condition number 10 shall read, as contemplated in the B-Walt Multi-Use Trail Feasibility Study and the town's Otis Street Corridor Study prepared by MDM Transportation Consultant, Inc., dated September 2021, the corridor study, the applicant shall grant an easement to the town in form and substance reasonably acceptable to the applicant and town. Further, the proposed modification, as stated above, is consistent with the approval issued by this decision and the purpose and intent of the original condition, and therefore a public hearing is not required. This modification does not change or remove any other finding or condition that is part of the original site plan approval for Atlantic Management Corporation.
Second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? That's five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. We'll have the easement due shortly, and it's always a pleasure to come onto the fine town of Westboro. Everyone stay healthy.
Okay, so why don't we go back to One Gleason Street? We're going to continue into the public hearing to modify the commercial ponin of special TOV, the Village Commons at One Gleason Street, and we're also having a discussion on the existing special permit and possible enforcement for Village and Commons at One Gleason Street. I think we're going to handle both of these items together as well. All right. Why don't we start with the presentation on the site plan?
Sure.
And then we can discuss some of the, some of the conditions out there. I'll get it up.
So Brooke Ansari has joined us, and Saloni and myself will be presenting the plans. So obviously, we started some time ago with the potential placement of the apartment units over on Oak Street here in Westboro, and after many months of discussions and going around in different, you know, concepts and ideas, I think it was the board's idea to potentially bring these units over here into the multifamily district that's near the train station, which I think is a fantastic idea and a good location. So after months of really looking at this and trying to work with something with the architect that fits into the site, we believe we've come up with a plan that works very well. I think the board was involved with all the public hearings over the last four or five months in talking about what goes here and how it fits here, and, and so we've put together these site plans. So we'll walk through between Saloni and I think we can explain generally what we have. So this is just really the overall locust sheet, so you can see the train station is just up at the top of the page, and let's see, there's the water treatment plant area, and then next to this, like just south of this, you will back up right directly to the Toll Brothers Multifamily Project. This sheet is called the Approved Layout Materials Plan, so we really just tried to take what was there approved years ago when we did the first special permit on this site. And you'll notice over in the front side of the lot, we've got the heavy dash line, and so that's really what we're calling the current site plan for these revised condominium units. On this plan, you can see in the white on the left side of the, the image in the dash line, that's the existing green space that is there. The gray is the parking that is either there or was planned, and you can see there were three proposed buildings planned on the site back then. The northerly building, I'm sorry, the easterly building, closest to the train station, that's a 3,000-square-foot, one-story commercial building, and there were two other buildings planned, the middle one, I think, was 2,600 square feet, and the south one, 3,000. So the three different buildings proposed, and you can see the amount of impervious surface is all in gray, so the, this section of the site was fairly dense. Next. So this one is basically in a compiled existing condition, so we had our survey team go out and locate the edges of curbing and structures and drainage units and any piping and the earth grating that's left and, and the existing building, and really just try and put together an updated existing conditions plan. You can see in the center of the island that's on the property, that area's all been landscaped. There are some nice trees coming up there. There were a few trees up along the edge of the driveway as you come into the site, and then the rest of the site down in the southwest corner nearest us is, is pretty open, just graded gravel in most cases, and rather unattractive currently, but there are a number of utilities that run through this section of the site. This next plan is a, we've called it, we call it part erosion plan because we're not showing the entire site out to the back, but again, within this larger dashed area. This is a preparation plan, just to show you that, you know, most of this area, the gray shaded area, that area needs to be regraded, stripped of topsoil if there is any, change the gravel, remove pavement, and we put notes on here to protect all the existing utilities on the site. But that, basically a site prep plan that would get it ready to go to the next step. This is our part layout and materials plan, so we've really tried to keep the existing grassed island that we've talked about at several meetings, keep the existing vegetation that is in those, keep the drainage system that is in front of the existing commercial building, and then you can see down in the lower right-hand corner of this plan, the larger footprint, that's the new building, and that is a three-story building with a total of 19 units, as has been discussed with the board. Saloni, can you just break down the unit count in there, what's, will be in that?
Yeah, there are 19 units with a total of 36 bedrooms. There are five one-bedroom apartments, 11 two-bedroom apartments, and three three-bedroom apartments.
Some of those are designated to be affordable units, I believe?
Yes, a total of four affordable units.
So just as discussed at the last board meetings, it's the same unit count, three-story, and everything is in that one building instead of having the outbuilding with a couple of little townhouses, but that is the, the unit count that has been discussed.
To the chair, question?
Go ahead, sir.
Which units are going to be affordable? Which units are going to be affordable?
I think there's...
There's one three-bedroom, two-two-bedroom, and one, one-bedroom.
And the parking count, Saloni, on this is currently...
So we have a total of 31 parking spaces provided.
Can you just pull the microphone in a little closer, Saloni?
Yeah. So we have a total of 31 parking spaces within the new site area. 15 of these are for the retail space and 14 are for the residential, but like we discussed earlier, we envision more overlap of use of the parking spaces for the retail being used by the residential in the evenings.
Does anybody else feel right at home with the dog barking? This is, this is my state of work at home, so, go ahead.
So again, this is the layout materials plan, just to show you, we've reserved as much of the existing paving and striping where we can. We've tried to beef up the actual limit of the green space within the main park there. On the original site plan, there were several, almost 10 proposed parking spaces that would eat up some of that green space in this final version, so we were able to remove that and increase the amount of green space. If we jump to the next plan, this is our grading and drainage plan. Really, the only grading that's needed is near Gleason Street. That, as you recall, is probably, you know, six to eight feet above the building in some areas down in the south corner. So really, that's just sloped down to the building, and then the rest of that area would be loomed and seeded near the side of the building, and just trying to think on that plan, there's not, there's not a lot of changes to the grading or drainage in the parking paved areas. We've collected shots on top of all the catch basins. Everything's pitched the same as it used to be. The total amount of impervious?
We are increasing 11,884 square foot of impervious in this.
What's the existing, under the approved plan?
On the approved plan, we have 18,187 square foot of impervious.
Yeah.
And now, after these changes, the total impervious is 30,071 square foot.
Five thousand plus or minus square feet new green space on this plan versus the original plan, because of all that hardscape that they had with, in the three building footprints.
Can you hang on a second? Lisa Elaine, the town engineer, has a question.
Is the commercial space now being proposed?
The one that's...
Just that upper 3,000 square feet, the other two buildings would go away.
So, one thing to keep in mind, and I don't have the exact figures with me, I apologize, the total flow cannot exceed whatever flow it's intended to now. Those flow calculations was based on 19 units. So you can't have the commercial in addition to 19 units, because the credit you were getting for the sewer included that building.
So you're talking sewers, but sewer flow, sewer...
When the calculations were done, it was an assumption that all the commercial would be removed. Whatever that credit was, then you've got, plus you've got a little bit of extra on top of that for the equivalent sewer on the other side. So you can't double dip. You, the maximum amount of sewer, whatever that amount was, and I do apologize for that, but I believe it was based on 19 units. You can't have use for the commercial. So you're going to get a certain amount of flow, it's up to you to figure out how to use it.
Okay, is that something that was in an email or some, or, I mean, I don't, this is the first I'm hearing that there was, this has been talked about at, I don't know how many board meetings, dozens, but this is the first I'm hearing.
I know that the maximum flow was discussed, so...
Yeah, I think we thought, I think...
Not while I was here, were you at meetings with it?
No. I think the perception...
I'm sure with my documentation, it's a little clearer.
You know, it'd be good to see it, yeah.
The total flow is now, if you can do half commercial, half, you know, residential, that's not for me to decide, but you were given a total flow, how you use that, is how you use it.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't...
It may be fine, I just don't recall, and I just wanted to crank it up.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and I guess it would depend on how you calculated the units, if they were all three-bedroom or some two-bedroom, someone, you know, who knows?
Correct, so it's based on...
So it'd be great, yeah, we'd need to see that. Is that something you could get, or Jenny, or?
So the, the board voted on July 18 to allow the density bonus of four units for the total of 19 additional units in exchange for the open space parcels, the sending parcel, and then part of that, the condition, was that no more than 4,000 gallons per day is allowed for the 19 additional units.
About 4,000?
Yes, 4,000 gallons per day.
Yeah, I think that was, I think the confusion is, is whether the 19 units, whether the flow calculations were for 19 units, replacing all three commercial units that were originally proposed, or whether they were just, that flow was for just replacing the two commercial units that have not been built.
I was unaware that the, the existing... I can confidently just say, regardless, you're allowed, you're, we're granting you 4,000 gallons, or how you... or how you divide it up, it's not up to me. I mean, you have 19 bedrooms, and I don't know, you can figure out the calculation yourself. And I can provide, you know, whatever emails. Honestly, it shouldn't be a surprise.
Yeah, it is to me, but I didn't come to many of the hearings. I know you were at a lot of them, and you guys talked about--
Yeah, there was never discussed--
There was also another consultant dealing with part of this in the original.
Yeah. I thought the commercial building had nothing to do with this 19 units.
No, because you were given credit for the flow, because Hannah has no, the Oak Street property has no flow value to the town. I mean, you weren't, you weren't earning capacity over there. So the only way for you to get capacity over here would be to give up your commercial flow. And then, to be honest, even the commercial flow, depending, it depends on the usage. If I gave you just some credit for retail, it was very low, so I gave you credit for, you know, a potential daycare center and higher, passing one which had higher uses. So that was how you were able to get the 4,000.
Okay.
But that's going to cause a major league problem, though, right?
Well, it could, could one of you just send us that information when you can, just so we have it, and then we look at it, I can't--
This is the first time I'm hearing it.
It's not the first time you're hearing it. I'm sure we've talked--
Not, not--
I know we talked about it with James.
James Taito is not involved in this.
I believe he was.
He was the only one.
No, we did it.
I think that's gonna, yeah, that's--
Again, I can't, can't even--
I remember, I was very clear on, even with the board, I wanted to make sure the board understood that 19 units doesn't mean the number of bedrooms. It's all based on the number of bedrooms. So you could have 19 one-bedrooms, it's different than 19 two-bedrooms.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we have a total of 36 bedrooms, right? Yeah, it's based on 36 bedrooms, plus the commercial.
All right, so let's, let's, I feel like there's some calculations and discussions that need to be done on this. I don't think we can hash this out tonight.
I haven't even reviewed these plans.
Well, I know that was one of the comments I had, is that we're still waiting for town departments to comment, so--
Yeah.
Clearly, there's an outstanding issue here that could affect things.
Yeah.
All right. Lisa, thank you for those comments. Randy, did you have further?
No, I don't think so. I know you had, excuse me, one other item on the agenda about a possible enforcement, so I wasn't totally sure what that was, but we should--
All right, well, let's--
Can we deal with the site plan first?
Yeah, I agree with that, Hazel. So why don't we get into questions from the board on the site plan modifications?
I had one question. The original plan allowed for parking for visitors to the original units there. And I'm wondering if that's been taken into consideration in looking at the parking plan, because there were a certain number, the way that was originally laid out, the people lived in the units over there were allowed X number of parking spaces for visitors.
Yeah.
And if you take and add all these new residents, and they also should be allowed parking for the residents plus visitors, is there not going to be a problem with the number, with the amount of parking available?
Can you go back to the approved, the original approved site plan? Yeah, so that one shows right up here in, so that's the big green island that's out there today, is right there.
Yeah.
And so this showed, what do we get, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces there, seven spaces here, but that was based on all of this being retail. And then there's a garage right here that's for the use of the units here. And then there's garages out in the back, and obviously, then each one had a parking space outside the buildings. So I think at the last couple of meetings that we talked about having the 19 units here, we were really, we went back and forth on this quite a bit about, you know, let's not make this green space any smaller than it was here. And you can imagine, when they built these spaces, once this was all built out, they built those spaces and those, this green space got quite a bit smaller. So in the current plan, if we jump to that, next, okay, this one. So when we talked at the last couple meetings, the board has suggested there were two spaces right here that were potentially going to be for the project, and they suggested that we keep these as visitor spaces for these units, I believe is the way they work.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are marked on here to be visitor spaces, two spaces that would be for use in these, these people, but not for the new project over here. So we tried to keep those, we turned these spaces so they're parallel, so that we didn't dig in so much and have to move some of that existing vegetation. And then we took these out completely, and we added two spaces over here. So we've tried to beef this up as much as we could, but again, with the mixed use that you'd have here, there won't be any of these people, you know, any of the visitors for this building at night. So there would be many more spaces when people come back from work and so forth and using this count.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just concerned, it doesn't look like, sort of, enough parking to work for both projects, the way that's set up. So I just like to think about it, I'm just concerned about the number of parking spaces available.
Yeah, I think, I think there's two more spaces here than there were in the approved site plan from years ago.
I'll go back and take a look.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Because of the existing garages, and then the, you actually, at the time, made us have that one space on each of their driveways outside the homes, so--
Well, the ones, but that's for the, that's for the units themselves. I mean, the driveways are for the, the use of the owners of the--
Condos.
Yeah, right, and you don't want people parking out in that road, because that road is fairly narrow.
Right.
As I'm saying, it just, looking at it and thinking about it, now, if someone wanted to have, you know, 20 guests, not give it a park. So that was my concern.
Okay.
So anyway, I think that's something that just ought to be thought about a little bit more. My other question, which is, I guess, a little bit about this, is the fact, what is that huge sign that is up there now? There's a hu, there is a huge sign now for, about the units that you've put up, saying they're for sale at the beginning, as you turn into Dana Drive, there's a billboard there.
Big sign at the site?
The big billboard.
Oh, that's the old sign. I need to get rid of it.
Well, I don't remember seeing that, it's very strange to me, but I--
It was always there.
Well, I would think that could come down at this point, since obviously, they're all sold.
Yes, I was going to convert that to this new thing, you know.
Right, so if you could remove that, I would say that that would be appropriate.
Any other questions? I have some questions. It looks to me like you're planning on construction vehicles coming in the existing driveway, and I thought we had discussed at one point a separate entrance for construction vehicles, so that the existing residents would not have to compete with construction vehicles. I'm not sure where else they could come in, other than, you know, as you come in off the street, you can see you're very close to the corner lot line, to the east, and then you've got a 24-foot wide drive coming in, and then you've got the sidewalk going out to the street. And those parking spaces at the entrance, that's all built already. I think we called out on the planes for a construction entrance there, just to try and beef that up for, so you don't tear up the pavement more than that, you have to, or you come in, but you can see the existing driveways 24-foot wide, and then you have the 10 space or 15 spaces in front of the building, those are all existing. But our thought was, that's why we put the limit of work line around essentially the paved island that's around the green space, so that vehicles would not go beyond there. We called out for a sign right when you get to that first intersection, that would say no construction vehicles pass that first corner right there, so they would have to turn at that point. So there's no vehicles that should come down and go even past the first house.
Make a left turn.
Yeah, but Randy, the thing I'm concerned about is that, don't forget, on the corner of Fisher Street and Dana Drive, where that driveway is, is where the school buses come for kids. So you obviously do not want construction vehicles coming in and out of that driveway, when you've got children using that driveway for access to school buses.
The only other choice would be to try and put something temporary over on the other part of the site.
That's exactly--
That'd be the only, have a temporary construction exit to come in from this side, in and out.
Yeah, I think that's the way it ought to be.
But if it works.
Yeah, I mean, you have a little steeper grade up there, but that whole area is, right now, it's a disaster, it needs to be regraded.
Yeah, it is a disaster.
So I guess I'd like to see where that's going to be located, how that's going to be managed, and also what type of fencing you're going to put around the construction site to, is there going to be, like, some temporary fencing around the construction site to, you know, keep--
Minimal.
People out of there? I don't want kids accidentally going in there, that kind of thing.
We're going to have a temporary fencing way right by the dumpster, all the way across.
Yeah, you'd need something around the site, even if it's one of the, you know, USA Fence or something, just to grab it, so people, you don't want people here going in and out of that, so--
Do you want to enter from this side, you're saying?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, if you do, if you can do that, then you don't, you're not going to tear up that pavement, so that would help. So you're going to have a little more work over here, but if you can come in and out that way, and if you can stay away from school buses, then it really works well for the way the site's laid out.
Yeah, the other thing I'm concerned with is hours of operation, we're going to need to consult with the neighbors as far as their, I want to respect the neighbors that are there as far as, I also want to get it built as quickly as possible, because the longer it drags out, the more of a burden it is on the neighbors. But I also, you know, want to look at whether Saturdays may or may not be work hours, that kind of thing, whether there's hours when the school buses are coming, that we have to limit access to the site in the afternoons when they're dropping off. So those are things we probably don't have to decide now, but certainly in the conditions. That's all I could think of for now. Sure, I'll think of more as we get comments from town departments. Jenny, did you have comments?
I didn't have any additional comments.
Okay. This is a continuation of a public hearing, so I did have a letter from Prabhat Chandra Pradhan, who is a resident of Village Commons. Prabhat, do you want me to read this in, or do you want to just address the board on the substance of it?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something--
Sure, please, please. Rather than have me read it verbatim, I'd rather hear it in your words.
Hi, Prabhat Pradhan, from Dhanayadri. So, yeah, I sent this letter, right? This is not the past email, we have already sent you on June 21st, and after that also, and a lot of my, you know, friends, the community members, they were here also. And this is summer, actually. We are coming here, like, spending time and coming here, now, like, they are in vacation or school time. So we have spent so much of time, and I don't think, like, we don't think, like, you guys are discussing whatever we're requesting. Our request was, like, no, make it to separate, actually, put a fence, actually, because, as you mentioned, right now, we have issues whenever, during, you know, Christmas and Thanksgiving and some Indian festivals, we cannot park, actually. We cannot park, actually, right now, when you take turn, like, two, three vehicles are, it's very difficult to take turns also. Now, 19 apartments will be there, so there will be parking issue definitely. You cannot say, like, oh, here it was there and that, actually. We are requesting you, like, you know, what is benefit, town is getting, getting one land, right? And builder is getting, what benefit we are getting, and we are coming here for last six month or nine months, actually. What we're getting, we are requesting, I don't know if you guys are discussing or not, actually. Why you will come here and spend every one, don't keep public hearing--
Prabhat, do you, do you have specific requests you want us to discuss? Because I did see some in your email.
Request is, like, you know, make it separate fence, like, two different communities. Entrance also, like, as temporary entrance can be there, you can make a permanent entrance over there for the new community, and for the older community, existing community, we need separate entrance and separate barrier, actually, over there. That's one. Second is, town is getting benefit, so some of the residents want to do, like, best man permission, if you can allow, that would be also very good, actually. That is a request, actually. But our main is, like, you know, defense, actually, so that existing community can stay at this one. And we are making request, we want to know whether you are discussing that or not, because we are coming and requesting going, it's not helping, actually.
So everything we discuss is done in public session. So if you haven't been here for all of our discussions, you can certainly watch the meetings, but we'll be happy to, we'll be happy to discuss those requests. I'm not, I'm not silent on those.
Other is, like, what is point of, like, you know, you make their apartment, those thing, and what we are getting. We are, like, in stress for last one year, or, and the existing community had a lot of issue, and thank you for you, you know, pushing now. We should have taken care, like, when you gave the last approval.
Okay, so, I'm just, okay, I'm just struggling, if I, you want me to work through your requests one by one, okay? The fence around the community, you know, I firmly agree with temporary construction fencing, but if you want to put a fence around your community, once you have control of the HOA, you can apply for a permit on that. But I don't, I never saw a fence around this in the original site plans, when it was proposed to be commercial, and now you're--
Original site plan doesn't have community, you don't have my house over there. 19 apartment, you, you guys also understand, 19 apartment, what will be that community, actually? So when we bought this thing, you didn't put, like--
Right, but when you bought, when you, okay, finish.
The commercial, right? You just to break--
Hazel, Hazel, when you bought your unit, were you aware that there could be three commercial units with 9,000 square feet of commercial?
It's what the plan shared by the builder, there were two buildings only.
Okay, well, the, the, the permit allowed for up to three commercial units and 9,000 square feet. That was, that was the original permit before anybody built anything over there. Now, three commercial units requires more parking under zoning than these residential units, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's true.
Yes, but--
So what you're, what you're telling me is that the change to 19 residential units, you feel like it's going to be a burden upon your, your parking situation--
Parking situation--
No, a further burden than what you would have had above and beyond if it had been three commercial units.
Right, because the commercial will be, like, let's say, nine to five, or nine to nine, or whatever, depending restaurant, right? But here, it's people, it's all the time, actually. 19 apartment, you can select, there won't be a car, there might have two cars also, right? Plus, like, you know, everyone will go office at the same time, it is more border, like, if you see. Office is, like, you know, if commercial building, there could be some office or whatever, makes some movie restaurant, restaurant will be a disrover, right? That will go also until, like, nine, actually, nine evening, actually. But here, there will be all that time. Plus, you know, if there is no fence, this 19 residents can come inside here, it will be more disturbance, because right now, also, we don't have that much of privacy. If they will walk in our walkway, what do we will do that time? We cannot fight with them. 19 people, right, 19 residents, how many people will live over there, if their childrens are also there.
Right, but--
They will come over here and play.
But it's my understanding that this is going to be a separate HOA. And so you do have the opportunity to apply for an application to build a fence, but you're asking the developer to do that?
So yes, we are asking, because, like, people are getting benefit, and the HO is not coming out until 10 years.
Okay, so--
Mr. Antsak mentioned, he can keep the HO with him for last, next 10 years. So when you are expecting, like, when I, we grow old, at that time, we will come and get that benefit, like, after five. I already living there, like, three years, paying tax to the town, I'm paying a good amount of money to town, right?
Right.
If you guys are not listening to us, then who will listen to us?
Well, we are listening to you, but that doesn't mean we have to agree with you, right?
No, I mean--
I mean, I want to, go ahead.
Just a quick question. If, if Farooq had finished the project with the three commercial buildings as planned, technically, then the HOA gets transferred to them, right? Then the commercial, the parking for the commercial, technically, they could say that none of the residents could park in the commercial parking lot, correct?
So there is a point, actually. We got, we got a HO document, in that document, it's mentioned, point is mentioned, there will be only 18 parking will left, and fast come fast, this 18 parking will for, like, a commercial component, the other can be used by, fast come fast out. The reason is, when I bought the house, it was promised to me, there will be some parking lot over here. So a lot of things go-- So a lot of things were verbal, you know, right? That's why we should give it to us and to see outcome. Lot of things went verbally, and it was promised to me, like, you know, there will be parking at the front side. Otherwise, I wouldn't buy my first house, I would have bought like last house, or I would prepare somewhere else.
Was that in the, in the decision or not? Because that's, what you might have been told by someone selling you the house, doesn't necessarily mean that's accurate with the decision. So that, that commercial parking, technically, if Farooq finished the project, you might not even have access to.
No, 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 they've written over there, like, you know, this will be like, it's one new component, right? And this green area will be separation between these two, and in one document, it's mentioned, there will be eighteen parking slots will be leave for the commercial component, and rest of the parking will be used by both, fast come, fast out.
Yeah, I would have to see that.
Yeah.
And that, that sounds like a limited amount of parking.
Super commercial. I don't think so. So I don't mean to, certainly, we want to discuss this, and obviously, the parking situation is an issue that we have to discuss as a board, and see if there's improvements that we can make, both for you and the future residents in the, this building, right?
So you also think this way, right? There will be nineteen families live over there, they will come and walk all this area, can we say no? We cannot say no to them, right? Then it will be very difficult.
I would just like to make a general comment.
Sure.
The, when the residents originally approached us, you said you wanted to be good neighbors and work with the people that might be in this apartment building. It's difficult for me to reconcile where you're coming from now, saying, what you want to do is fence off these two projects, and, which makes no sense to me whatsoever, and I think maybe you ought to think about the fact that these are neighbors, you're going to be working with these people, you each, you're going to have your homeowners associations, if you have problems with dealing with things, it would be through the homeowners associations. If the homeowners associations work together and decide they want to put up a fence, fine, that's out of our hands as a planning board, but I don't think that we, as a planning board, should make, make a decision about putting up some sort of a fence at this point, because I don't think it's appropriate for the planning board to be dealing that. You put up fences in situations where there is a health or safety or some sort of a problem that's going to occur, it's to protect people in the community, it's not to wall off communities.
Right.
The first time when we came here, like, you know, after nine months, so first time we even didn't know, and this meeting was going on, at the first time only, we requested our defense, actually. In that email also, if you see, June 21st, we have sent, because before that, I think, June 14th or sometime, the meeting was there, on that also, we requested for fence, so the fence request is there from beginning, actually. We know a lot of this, so that's why I want to say, when we send email, you guys are taking notes on here, like, to just discuss, because after discussion, we are losing those information, right?
So I, I'm struggling with this, because you, it, if there had been three commercial buildings there with no fence, I don't, I don't understand that, like, I, I, like, I don't understand, so it's the same, it's the same problem with the parking, like, parking would have been an issue for you with the commercial units as much as it is now, and they're actually proposing more parking spaces, and also the finished basements, like, I, I don't really understand what this project has to do with your.
I think that's.
Requested finished basements.
Request.
Like, I mean, is, is the next thing that you're going to ask us to have the developer put in new stoves, or, I mean, I don't understand, where, how far does this go?
Basement is the request, because town is some get benefit, and the residents are already.
Okay, but, but, but you're a taxpayer, right? You are the town. You, you know, I mean, you want, you want yourself to benefit, like, does that mean that the developer has to give everybody finished basements in town? Like, I don't understand.
With that land, with that land, how I will as a person, or the other people, people as a personally, how they will get benefit, we don't know, but how much stress we have gone through for last one year, or the problem we are thinking, expecting to face, that is definitely not benefit, like, getting the land, actually.
Mark, at this point.
Look, when you talk about the stress that you've been through for the last year, I am very sympathetic to that, because I understand how long it took for some people to get in there, and some of the outstanding conditions that we're going to talk about tonight, it's unacceptable, right? And we're trying to address that within our authority, but when you start asking me for fences that weren't in the original plan, and finished basements that weren't in the original plan, I just feel like you're reaching out, out of, and to be honest with you, that's, that's out of our authority. We don't have the authority to tell him that, till you finish the basements.
All right. Can I?
Mark, I, I think we've discussed this enough, we said, we've got, we're going to look at it.
Hold on, though, John had a comment.
I just want to, so you asked, what's the benefit to you, and Mark just mentioned it, you right now live in a community that's not a finished project. The developer has not finished the project, has not finished the paving, has not finished the landscaping. The only leverage we have as a board to get him to complete that project is that he can't lift a finger on this new apartment complex until he's going to be able to finish all that work. So if you want to live in a community that's not finished, that's fine, but what we're trying to do is make sure he finishes the project he started in the first place.
So this one is.
That's the benefit.
This one is not boards, like, responsibility to give approval of the last house, to make all these things finished, or that also, the residents has to work with it, the builder, or builder is, can do whatever you want. Because we are paying tax, and you guys are there to give approval, right? So can you, you just hold approvals until he finish everything? That is, that is, so that is.
Can you, yeah, maybe you can explain.
Okay, so we do have recourse, we, we could call, okay, we have a security bond that would probably not be enough to cover the incomplete items, and that would end up costing the town money.
So that's why you shouldn't give approval of the last houses.
Then your neighbors would have nowhere to live. And, and what if you were in that position? Hang on, hang on, let me ask, let me ask. One of your neighbors came in front of us, his wife and his kids were living in a hotel with nowhere to live. If that was you, you would have been right here in front of us, begging for us to give him the condition, the approval to move in. So to, to go off of Hazel's point, be a good neighbor for this project and to your other neighbors.
Right, right. So that means you don't have any leverage on the builder, right? Like, you know, because.
No, but that's not true at all.
No, but you have to understand, right? If this builder was building this building over at Oak Street, which was the original proposal, right, that would be a completely separate permit, we would not be able to condition that building permit on anything to do with your project, right? By moving this to Gleason Street, now we can put conditions in the modification that will require all those little incomplete things that you're, that we've heard many, many complaints over, those will have to be done before he gets a building permit, right? And obviously, he's, you know, so the only other recourse we had before this was to call in the bond, which would have most likely cost the town money, because the bond is not big enough now, given the increase in costs, it's nowhere near big enough to cover even the, the paving, let alone everything else that's in there.
So whose fault is that one? Not residents, right? Because you are experienced people over here sitting, and you are like experienced people, you should have figured that out earlier. As a taxpayer, as a resident.
That's not how it works. The bond, so, hold on, hold on, can I explain how the bond is set? The bond is set by the engineer giving an estimate for the amount of work to be, to complete, and that is done on standards through whatever the industry is, right? So we don't set the cost, and then there's a contingency to deal with price increases and all that stuff. The last few years have seen inflation more than we expected, so there's no foreseeing that type of cost increase. So there is a contingency in these bonds to get that cost increase, but not projecting what happened the last few years, not projecting a pandemic, not projecting all of those things. So there's, it, it's not necessarily an error on the planning board's part, and it's not necessarily an error on the engineer's part, it's standard practice of how bonds are established, and then things change in the real world, and those are unforeseen.
Okay, so coming to this one, right, as some mention, like, you know, there could be a temporary entrance, can the entrance be also separate? Because we want little less traffic or something, like, we, see, here, you think, existing neighbors, apart from whatever you said, builder has to finish those thing, builder has to finish that one, I don't know, Mincha, how, I don't get that one, I'm not convinced for that one, but yeah, thank you, you said something, but at least the residents get some benefit, like, you know, if the entrance, you can put like a different side, right? The traffic will be little less, right? So that's also something you can do, actually, if you don't want to put a fence or something.
Well, yes, but what you have to remember, and was the thing I said earlier, was the fact that there may be some things which you've asked for, which are inappropriate for the planning board to conclude, to include in a site plan approval. However, once you have a homeowners association, if you want to put up a fence, if you want to put up a gate, anything like that, you as a homeowners association can do that, but it may not be appropriate.
Well, you can't say that, they can do that, they can apply for a permit.
They can apply for the permit. If, if, whatever structure you put up, a fence is considered a structure, if it meets with the zoning requirements, or the building department requirements, but there are times when it just is not appropriate, I don't think, quite frankly, for the planning board, is my feeling, to do certain things, and I think that what you're asking for are things that are more appropriate that you deal with through a homeowners association.
Yeah, but like, if, if you, you wouldn't have, we would have got our homeowner association maybe now, but we are not going to get for another five years, or maybe ten years. You have to understand that also, right? I'm living there for more than three years, and homeowner association is not transferring us, we are not doing anything.
But that's not up to us, that's up to the builder, we don't turn the homeowners association over to you. The other thing is, what you have to realize is, on our agenda tonight, which is a discussion after we finished with this discussion, is a list of conditions which the builder is supposed to complete prior to the time he's issued any building permits or construction permits on his original, on the original project out there. So we're dealing with two separate items, actually. One is the new site plan for the apartments, the second one is looking at the list which he received of items which needed to be finished and have to be done prior to the time there's any movement forward on construction. So the thing you were talking about is the new construction, you were also bringing in this second item, but I think at this point, and I think we've probably had enough discussion about the new one, and I'd like to move on myself to the conditions which we've set forth to Mr. Ansari, which have not been fulfilled in the original site plan.
So, so, so basically, we may not get any help, like, whatever you guys decide is fine, right?
Well, when you say you're not getting any help, we are, we're doing what we can within our authority, but I don't understand how we can go back to an approved plan for those fifteen existing residential units and ask the developer to do X, Y, Z more than was originally approved, right?
So I want to say, I want to say this one again, like, if it would be a commercial, right? Except restaurant, everything will be like eight to five, or eight to four. After four o'clock, the kids could have used that area, or they could have, you know, we could have work freely, right? If it is a restaurant, then it's a different, but now, because you have nineteen apartments, that will be busy all that time, so that is the difference I am trying to say, actually. Even we discussed this one, like, last time when you asked also, 14th, June, during June, same thing we discussed. That is the difference, I, I don't know if everyone understands, all the residents understand, but when we talk to restaurant residents, they understand also.
Right, so, I mean, I'm not, I don't know, you know, again, I, I don't know what could have gone in there, I'd have to go back and look at the use table, but a restaurant, a brewery, I know a brewery could go in there, because I know, you know.
With tons of traffic, cars going through.
During, like, during, next to residence, brewing cannot come, actually.
No, it's in industrial zones area, it can come.
Most thing will be different, now you guys are telling, oh, this could happen.
No, I mean, you, you, I understand you're not an expert on the zoning, but you have to look at what could have gone in there. I mean, you, you say that every business that went in there would be nine to five, but I don't know if that's true.
No, actually, I'm not aware of this town things, okay? Just we are paying tax, so there will be no another body ever planning board who can listen to us.
Well, this is the planning board that was elected, so I don't know exactly what you're saying, right? Like, I mean, if you think we're not, we've been, we, hold on, we, hold on, we've been talking to you for twenty minutes now, at least, right? So we are listening, Zaza, okay? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to shut you down.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
But you're asking us to, to change the existing fifteen units far and above, beyond what was originally approved, you're asking him, I don't even know if a separate entrance could work, given fire department requirements, I mean, that seems unlikely to me, but I'd be happy to discuss it with them.
I'm not saying like, I, so first was like, whether you are considering this one, discuss on, because we have request, right? Fire, like, you know, the fire, you know, inspector, tech, and discuss and all, we can think about.
I just don't see.
No, I mean, I think, I think, again, I feel like you're looking at fifteen units and saying, well, they're never going to build the commercial units, but if they did, you have to look at what could have gone in there, and what could have been your neighbors, and is this nineteen units better than what could have been in there, and I think you really need to look at that.
Nineteen houses, anyway, we already know, I already told couple of times, nineteen houses means, like, you know, people will there, cars will there, definitely this is different than like a commercial, right? So I already told this.
Okay, so, so that commercial, that green space in the middle, are you maxed out in this, on the, on the open space? If that green space were a little bit smaller, and you had more dedicated resident spaces, would that help?
Open space.
Right.
Our issue, you know, like, you know, a lot of people are there, and traffic will come, right? Like, there, there will be nineteen cars, right? It will be issue in the morning or afternoon, a lot of cars will come in check, now the kids, you know, play around that area, it's very difficult, like, you know, right now to find some play area, or, when I come out, so my parking is this fast one, when I come out, I get also scared most of the time, because, you know, some kids might be working or something. Now there will be nineteen houses and a lot of cars, right? Those you have to fill, when you stay there, you will fill those issues.
But see the plan behind us, this is the approved plan that shows three additional commercial, and let me, let me finish, three commercial buildings. One of those buildings is where you wanted, where we're going to have a proposed curb cut for the construction traffic, where you'd want to have a separate entrance. So when you bought your unit, there's already going to be a building where you want this separate entrance, okay? Secondly, you could have had three office buildings, three restaurants, three breweries, whatever it is, they would have tons of car traffic coming in and out, people that don't even live there, coming in and out at all times. Right now, you don't have that, so I understand you not experiencing, you know, the amount of traffic, but as it stays in the future, you know, you could have a ton of traffic here, what you're going to have is just residents coming in.
And I just want to add, having residential units next year is actually going to help the value of your house instead of having three commercial units, and so in the long term, if you're planning on staying for, and through the project, having the residential will actually benefit your property, your property value.
We don't know, having like a single house you allow, so you don't have any problem.
You know what, I, I will say that getting this project finished will help your value, because the way.
That we don't know, I don't know.
Well, I got to be careful what I say about that, because that's my job.
So can we?
Yeah, I guess.
Single house is different, or double house is different, everyone knows that.
Yeah, but I, look, I just want to get this project finished, right? Like, I, I don't want you to have to live in an incomplete project for any longer than possible, and my fear is that if we don't move this forward, that that project will remain, I mean, I can, I can point to another project across town where the last resident moved in over three years ago, and it's not done.
Mark, can we just move forward at the moment to the list that Ansari, and see what he's finished, where he's going? Perhaps if you listen to this, and you'll see the things that we're trying to get accomplished on your behalf, so.
Okay, well, we do have.
We have the town engineer.
This is a public hearing, Hazel, so I, I think we've given you enough time, we've heard your concerns, I'm not going to keep going back and forth on the same things, but I wanted to, I know the town engineer had some comments, and I know, I don't know if there's anyone else here from the public that wants to speak. So Lisa, if you have some comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I'm hearing frustration for the other project, and I know that you're going to be talking about that. Just want to give the board a few comments. Obviously, we talked about the bond reduction. W sentiment is no. Did want to give you an update, I did call the inspector tonight, and.
Well, they have finished the, he did clear out in the back there where the garden is going to be or the what's, where the garden was going to be behind those garages. He did clear that portion out and, and straighten it out so that it--
I think Jenny was out there today, so she'll give us an update on what's done on that list.
I did, after we spoke, I went out there, and there are a lot of items that--
I'm not sure when your inspector was out there last. No worries. Anything else?
Don't forget about the drainage issues, though.
Right.
So there's been no progress on the drainage issue?
I don't know yet, we'll get an update from Jenny. Okay.
I believe that, do you have any questions?
No, but I'm sure we'll, the night is still young. All right.
See you after this email.
All right, Lisa, well, I'm sure we'll be doing some follow-up with you, at least on the sewage issue. So it is a public hearing, is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the board? Do we have any other public comments in writing? No, all right. Before we continue this, is there any, any other questions or comments from the planning board? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, if you could just state your name and address, and then feel free to address the board.
What are--
Right, we, we're going to go through that in detail as soon, as soon as we're done with--
What?
It's, it's really two separate agenda items, so I wanted to get through this. So if there's any comments on these site plans?
Okay. About the site plan, I just wanted to know when the project--
Yeah, one of the things we will require as part of the approval is a construction schedule, and we intend to have thresholds that would be required to make sure that that schedule is followed. You know, I, I don't know what that schedule is, if maybe premature to ask the developer if he has a finished date in mind, or, you know, I think, I think that's, that's probably a little up in the air, I don't know yet. Okay?
I just wanted to--
Neither do I, yeah, no, I'm right there with you. Yeah, and I don't think the developer wants it to go on for five years because it's an expensive proposition, so--
As a resident there, I just want to make sure that you--
All right, yeah, all right, thank you. Any other questions from the board, comments, public comments? Jenny, did you have anything else?
I have no other comments.
Okay, if, there's nothing else, if somebody wants to make a motion to continue?
You may not have a motion on this to continue.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to modify the commercial component of special permit TOV 2014-1 for Village Commons at 1 Gleason Street to our next meeting.
September 19th.
September 19th at 6:30.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? That's five to zero. All right. Jenny, why don't you start on the list of the conditions and what's been done and what's left, and then we can get the developer's response and questions from the board.
Okay, and I can share my screen if you want me to show the photos that I took today--
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay, I just have to switch over.
Yeah, do you, I think you can unplug, and I'm sorry, I forgot your first name already.
Saloni.
Okay, don't worry, I'll forget it again, I'm terrible with names.
No problem.
Can I say one?
Oh. It is, all right. Okay, here we go.
So I did go out and met the developer on site today, and we went through the items that were outstanding, that in the letter had indicated we wanted to see them done by September 1st. So the items are on the screen highlighted in yellow. The lighting plan, including the photometric plan, was to be submitted to the design review board, and that was done, they, the developer went in front of the design review board on August 29th, and the lighting plan was approved, including specifications for the lighting. So that was done. The developer was also supposed to submit a final landscaping plan and have the landscaping completed, including looming seating and stabilization of the common areas. And so I'll bring up the photos. So you can see in the back area here that it has been seeded. And this is, this photo here is the back area where there was a proposed community garden, but now it is going to be just a green area, grassy area.
I, I thought that was going to be the playground, am I mistaken?
I think they, it was up to the homeowners if they wished to put a playground there. His requirement was just to level it out and have it available--
Okay.
That they could put equipment there if they wanted to for kids.
That's correct. In regards to the dumpster enclosure, it is set up to have the enclosure put on, and in speaking with Faruk, he said that it should be installed by the end of this week, it was ordered. And the installer should be coming out this week to finish the installation of that. But the dumpster is there. For the fire hydrants, I know the developer reached out to the fire department who relayed that he would need to hire a private company to complete that, and I don't know the status of that. If the chair wants to ask Faruk to speak on that.
Yes, I have contacted an agency about two weeks ago after the fire department told me that they don't do the testing of private, you know, hydrants. And he is now scheduled, he said to let me know, to come out and take care of those hydrants, testing-wise. So it should be, should be done in another week's time or so. He didn't give me the exact date, they're very busy, but they will come out. I already have a quote from him, so everything is all agreed upon. As far as the signs are concerned, I have not received any signs from the, from the fire department to put it on. You're talking about the signs for the hydrants, right?
Yes, those will be done by the private company, they'll just show on the fire hydrants when they were tested.
Right, yeah, right. So the same people that are doing that. Other than that, I think, is that it, or should I tell them--
Yes, I just wanted on that item, you to update us on that.
Okay, all the lights, poles have been ordered after the DRB approved it. They, they said four to six weeks for delivery, but I'm going to go ahead and put all the stuffs in and get them all ready, so as soon as the poles come, we just install them. We also are going to prepare, I've already marked it out based on the plan that's in front of you right now, that the sidewalk would be extended all the way to Gleason, that the planning board had requested, so that would, it's on, on the plate, I don't know, should we wait until the plan is approved to get the sidewalk in or just get it in, you know? So, but I am working on the other side of the sidewalk, which needs to be paved, and you're looking at about another two weeks before that gets paved. I finally found a paving company that is willing to come out and do the paving. I, I basically asked them to do both Zara Drive, even though it's, it's not your thing, it's a ZBA thing. Zara Drive and Village Commons both together and be done with it, because I, I've been working with Jenny on that, you know? And we marked where we should stop the paving, I think we all had walked the site, and that's where it's going to stop. So he has not given me a date yet, I just want to make sure that even though it, it has nothing to do with you guys, but Lisa has to release the bond on Zara in order for me to pay for these things. I cannot be paving and having tons of money with the town. So what else is there, the last?
I'll go through, I'll go through the rest of the items. I will go through them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment? You said as far as the extension of the sidewalk, I think that ought to be done immediately because I'm concerned about the fact that weather will begin to come in, and if kids are trying to get to the school bus, they should be using that sidewalk to walk down there. So I know it wasn't on the original plan, but there now has been an agreement that you would continue it on there, and I think anything to do with paving or striping or anything--
Yeah.
We need to get done as soon as possible.
I, I had a question, and since we have residents, and we had talked about, can you go back to the, the curbing--
I was just going to ask, does that include curbing?
Yeah, there was an area in front of those buildings that are--
Playground?
Easterly side of the site. And as well, there's some-- So the, so, yeah, where Jenny's cursor is now, there's no curbing called for. Did we determine whether the residents want curbing there? Because I think it would look better with curbing, and there is curbing required further down in the site that would be done with the paving. So I just, I don't want to, I don't want to require him or ask him to do curbing there, but I, I think it would help with drainage.
Yeah, I do, and I haven't heard anything from the residents on the curbing. I think one thing to keep in mind is that it might look different once the final binder is on, because there's the top coat for the driveways, I think it needs another top coat there as well as the road. So it wasn't part of the original plan, and, I mean, you could request that from the developer.
Didn't a resident in the last meeting state that they didn't want that because they wanted the ability to pave a second spot in front of their unit?
I don't know, that was discussed, I just don't know what, I, you know, I don't--
Curbing would mean that you would need that additional curb cut, so that is something to consider if they ever want--
It would be sort of silly to, you know, put the curbing in, and then once it's turned over to the homeowners, they then have to cut all the curbing out.
Yeah, I know, I agree with that. I, you know, I just don't know what the residents want there, and I do think it would look better, but I, I guess it's not something we can make a decision on here. All right, this time.
I have a few, I have a few more items on the list also--
Go ahead, Jenny.
--if you want me to continue. So in reference to the ponding water issue, the DPW wanted an engineered solution, and I have not had a chance to talk to Lisa in detail about whether they're satisfied, but when we did go out there, it did appear that there was an improvement, and I have a picture. So this is the area where the water runoff, right in front of here where it was pooling, where the community center building was. So it is starting to runoff into the back of the properties instead. And in the back, there was the, the swale dug. I have not confirmed with engineering that they are satisfied with that, though. Let's see, for the water shut-off valve at number 16, that was completed, it was one inch above the walkway pavement, and now it is flush. In regards to the construction debris and equipment that was in the rear of the property, most of it has been relocated to the front of the property, and I did witness cleanup effort being made, so the developer relayed that the rest of it should be done by the end of this week.
Do you have a picture of that area?
So this is looking to the rear of the property.
Yeah, this area.
So this area, so they were preparing for the sidewalk.
What kind of landscaping is going in here? And when is that going to be completed?
I'm sorry, what?
What kind of landscaping is going in here, and when is that--
Well, we only own like 20 feet from the edge of the curbing, edge of the road, the rest is the other party's. So I am finishing up that landscaping here, you know, another week, that would be all done, and we've got to run the sidewalk from where we left it off all the way to the back. So that will be done. Now, as far as planting any arborvitae, arborvitae were, were shown to be planted right on the, on, on, on the other side of the driveway on the property line, and we can do that, we have time for that, we can buy a bunch of them and plant them, that's it. But most of that land that you see on this picture does not belong to Village Commons.
So, so is that your backhoe and--
Yeah, actually, the backhoe is really standing on other people's lot.
Okay, so are you, are you going to reseed all of that area for the neighbor to--
Yeah, they will all be, all be completed, and yes, we will, we will do all our area, you know, reseed it and, and put the, put the sidewalk in. There's got to be a sidewalk that's got to go in, yeah. So, you know, the screener is going to be--
I just know that I, I wouldn't want to look at this. I mean, I want that, that cleaned up so that--
Yeah, it will be.
I guess I understand the desire for a fence when I look at that.
We'll grade it all out and, and then complete that.
Yeah, there's another picture I can pull up as well.
Yeah, the clubhouse is complete, and there's a little bit work inside left, like tying the hot water tank and stuff.
Do you have a picture of the clubhouse, Jenny?
And whose bulldozer is that?
Yes.
You see that, that machine that's standing? That's not our machine, that belongs to the people--
What about that pile of rubble?
That's not on our property either.
Do we have the, can we talk to Fred about some type of, I mean, is there any enforcement that shouldn't look like that, right? I mean, that's open space for that building.
We can reach out to that property owner to find out if they can remove it. My understanding is that it's their debris, and that is what they use to snowplow potentially.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's fine. When the, there's going to be arborvitae all along here?
All along, yes, on the other side of the sidewalk.
So you won't be able to see that?
Excuse me?
You won't be able to see that parking lot for the arborvitae?
Well, you'll still see it, but once they grow a little bit fatter.
I realize it'll take a while for the arborvitae to grow, it's not--
But for now, yeah, you will.
All right.
So I'll show you the, the clubhouse, the bathroom was installed, and so, sorry, these are all mixed up. There it is.
Question was the exterior, does the exterior have shingles on it?
That is something I did not check.
I, I would guess that the original plans called for all the buildings to have similar exteriors, and I would think that would have included the clubhouse, and I thought maybe when I looked, it doesn't have shingles. Does the exterior of the clubhouse have clubbers on it all the way around?
It has, it has those crossboards.
It has crossboards, but it has--
Yeah, that has not been done yet.
Okay.
The, the guy is going to be there Monday or Tuesday, I think, next weekend, finish that.
That's--
That will 100% complete the clubhouse.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So in another two weeks, I think it'll be, it'll be very much close to completion, except for the paving.
So I, I guess my frustration is that it takes, you know, threatening with fines to get you to call the fire department, to get you to call, I forget what other, can you go back to that list? You know--
Paving.
Yeah, well, the paving, you know, I know he's been trying to get that in for a while, but, you know, the, the fire department signs, I mean, you built another project in town, that shouldn't be a new thing. You know, I, to, cleaning up all that, I mean, again, I just, I don't really like that it's taking threats to get this stuff done, but I also feel like you've made a, made some progress over the last couple of weeks, which, you know, I do appreciate, so that's my only comment.
So Jenny, you said that the ponding water at the clubhouse patio, that has been taken care of?
It has been improved, but I have not spoken to engineering since I went out there today to be able to understand if they are satisfied with that.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? I, do we have a motion on this, a draft motion? I mean, I don't necessarily think we should ask-- I mean, I don't necessarily think we should ask the zoning enforcement officer to fine him at this point. I think we can continue this agenda item, put it on our next meeting. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
There's no motion for this unless the board wanted to extend time on any of the items to have them completed, or they wanted to request enforcement.
All right.
Could we suggest he come back in two weeks? And just as an information item, I mean, I don't think we need a motion or anything, but just ask him to come back at our next meeting on the 19th and so that we can see what progress has been made.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair. We put this same agenda item on our next meeting. All right. I don't think we have to take any action tonight. So if there's nothing else, thank you for coming in, and we'll. Have that list? I have that list. I did, she sent me that. All right. We're gonna move on to additional agenda items, and we will see you on the 19th.
Thank you.
All right. I skipped over some items. We have a planning board recommendation for the street acceptance of Quick Farm Road. Jenny, can you summarize this for us?
The DPW has requested that the select board begin the process to accept Quick Farm Road at the 2023 town meeting. Quick Farm Road was part of a subdivision entitled Orchard Hill that was approved by the planning board in 1999. The project has since been completed, and the DPW has found that it is in compliance with the plan submitted. So on August 29th, the select board voted its intention to lay out Quick Farm Road as a public way, as shown on the plan. And now it's the planning board's turn to submit a recommendation to the select board.
Any questions? All right, do we have a draft motion? Anybody wants to make this motion?
I moved that the planning board vote to recommend the layout of Quick Farm Road as a public way as shown on plan entitled Acceptance Plan of Roadway and Easement Quick Farm Road in Westboro, Massachusetts, owned by Cost Investment, Inc., dated January 7, 2022, revised through August 31, 2022, prepared by Thompson Liston Associations, Inc., which plan is on file with the clerk. This recommendation is being made pursuant to MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81G and 81I.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Five to zero in favor. Next item we had was a continuation of the public hearing for 165 Flanders Site Plan Review Application. I have a letter from the applicant dated August 31, 2023, addressed to Mark Silverberg, Chair, regarding EG America 165 Flanders Road. Dear Chairman Silverberg and members of the board, on behalf of EG America, we would like to request a continuance of the planning board hearing for the project at 165 Flanders Road until the planning board meeting in December 2023. We had the opportunity to meet collectively with the town staff this week to discuss the steps required to move the project forward. And we'll be providing a more complete status report to the Conservation Commission next week. And we'll be sure to provide your board a copy of that correspondence. If you should have any questions or require additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. And that's sign Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton, PC, who is the attorney for the applicant. Jenny, did you have any comments on this before we?
In my memo, I had just included that there's outstanding items that need to be addressed between engineering and conservation departments. And so we're really just waiting for that. So I had suggested that instead of continuing it to the next meeting and on and on, that they continue it until December, which they seem to be comfortable that they'll have everything done by then.
Did you ask them about an archaeological survey?
Not yet. I need to ask them about that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we have a, we had a draft motion if somebody wants to make that.
I moved that the planning board continue the public hearing for the Site Plan Review Application for 165 Flanders Road to Tuesday, December 5, 2023, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant in a letter dated August 31, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Hazel. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. We did the 180 Turnpike Road. We did one Gleason. Security bond release for 128 Turnpike Road. Sediment and erosion control. This project's been done for several years, and they just want their $10,000 bond returned, which we have confirmed with DPW that that's appropriate. So if there's no other comments or questions?
Yep, I make a motion to release the performance security for erosion control as detailed in the special permit decision for 128 Turnpike Road dated February 4, 2014, in the amount of $10,000 plus any incurred interest.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. We also had a vote to return unneeded project escrow funds for Six Bellows Road. Similar, there's $360 left in escrow funds that should go back to the applicant. We have confirmed with DPW and engineering that that's appropriate. Questions?
I make a motion to release the remaining escrow funds in connection with the decision for Six Bellows Road dated 5/2, 2023, in the amount of $360 plus any incurred interest.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. We have a vote to approve Jenny Jengris' signatory unapproved A&R plans. Rather than having all five of us sign, we, if we take a formal vote.
Good move.
We can allow Jenny to sign, and this would just relate to A&R plans. Questions?
Yeah, does that, what's the process for that? Is it just a vote? Do we have to, like, file a letter to the registry?
You, so Kristen would draft a letter, and then we would file that with the registry, that you took this vote tonight.
How long is that good for?
Forever, if you want it to be. Until my employment is no longer, or?
Can we, can we vote to not necessarily specify your name, just Director of Planning?
No, I wouldn't do that. And I, that was, I think, the point you were trying to make there is that let's give it to the named person, and then when the next person comes, we can do it. I, I think it's inappropriate to do a blanket of forever on anything.
Well, what happens if Jenny, is she still gonna be able to assign?
No, but then the planning board can always sign.
Right, if I left, then the planning board would sign, just like last time you all signed it.
Right, because there's always the option.
The vote was for Jim to sign it.
What if a developer goes to you and says, here's a bunch of money, just sign this A&R for me?
Well, it's in my capacity as the planning director.
Okay. I'm, I'm overthinking this as usual.
So two questions. Do we have to vote each time? I know that we're voting to authorize you to sign. But do we have to vote each time for an A&R to say that you can sign?
No, you do not.
Okay. And then the second thing is, I may support a time limit just because five years from now, none of us may be on the board. And then we're basically having this board that's brand new take on our responsibility. So I don't, I don't know what that time limit would be.
Five years sounds appropriate. That's a planning board term, as it is, so five years. I would support five years.
Sure, I agree with that. Also, one last question. This doesn't allow you to endorse A&Rs until they've become before us and we voted, right?
Oh, correct, yeah.
It's not like we're saying.
No.
Well, that's mass general law. I wouldn't be able to.
All right, just double checking.
They just can't come into her office and say, here it is, we signed it.
Well, it's a good question, because in some states, the planner, planning director can endorse these plans.
Without, without going before the planning board?
Right.
Oh, okay.
All right, so see, it's a good question.
A good question.
All right. I know we had a draft motion on this, I think, but we might. John, why don't you? You had the suggestion to modify it. Maybe we didn't have a draft on this, did we?
Well, I might not have.
I think we had a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow Jenny Jengris to sign A&R plans on behalf of the board for the next five years or until she leaves her position as Director of Planning.
Could I just modify that with plans which have been approved by the planning board?
Endorsed by the planning board.
Which, okay. So I make a motion to allow Jenny Jengris to sign plans that have been endorsed by the planning board, A&R plans that have been endorsed by the planning board for the next five years or until she leaves her position as Director of Planning. Any discussion, and we good with it? All those in favor? Five to zero in favor. Reports of board members who attend other committee meetings. Mass Plan Committee met. We are having Jenny prepare a slide deck to be presented at town meeting to update the town on progress. I think it would be beneficial if we have time before town meeting to present that slide deck here. That's something I haven't discussed with you. But if, if possible, I think it would be good for the board to see that prior to town meeting. Okay. Any questions on that?
Yeah, when's town meeting?
October's, that's the third Monday in October, is that?
16th?
7:00 PM. Till it's over.
You weigh in.
It's a, so far, it's a pretty short warrant. Knocking on wood. All right. Any other reports from board members?
Design review met and approved Ansari's permission of the lighting. And he's moving ahead with it. I think that was it, it was on that agenda.
Okay.
And we do have one minute.
Now, do we have our scheduled meeting for Zoning Review Committee?
Yes, I believe it's next week. Yep. Let me just see here.
It was in the following.
Jenny, you're still up on the screen up top. I don't know if you want that or not.
No, it's okay.
We do have minutes for August 22nd.
No, no.
Any?
Any comments or corrections?
Yes, the 25th.
No, nobody.
Everybody had a chance to review them? Could I have a motion to approve the August 22nd minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Kristen, for another good job.
While Jenny's looking, we, well, maybe we should wait for Jenny. We had a discussion on the planning department budget for fiscal year 2025.
The meeting was, is the 25th, September 25th. We'll be meeting with the zoning working group to discuss potential articles for next town meeting. Not the October one.
For March.
For March, or later.
All right, so any, I don't think there's anything further on that, but discussion on the planning department budget?
So as most of you know, because I met with you, we had discussed the potential for another member of the planning department, an assistant planner, or something along those lines. And after, I think I've been here two months, I realized that that is definitely something that would be very helpful to the department. There's a lot of projects, and there are definitely some weak areas that could use more focus. So I am going to be proposing a assistant planner position or an associate planner position. I'm not sure yet what the exact title will be. But that will be for the budget for FY '25. One of the details for that is that I would like to see that position focused on transportation specifically, because I feel like that's a weak area and something that we don't focus enough time on when it's such an important goal for the planning department and for the town. So this position or this person would be working with engineering and myself on things with complete streets, shared streets and spaces, the B-wall, looking at the long-range transportation plan, things like that. So I'm open to any comments or questions on my thoughts or ideas on anything you think should be added to the job description. I will add that the everyday items will still be part of this person's job description. But I really think that a focus on transportation would be important for the town.
And I'll add that one of the things we discussed was the VIA transportation service will be expiring in the next, in two years. And this associate planner assistant would have a focus on trying to come up with an alternative or continue funding, if necessary, for VIA. You know, obviously, last mile transportation is important, given how popular VIA is and where the train station is. I think we, we as a town should continue to provide some services there, so.
Right. And just focusing on a more cohesive plan, you know, as it pertains to not just vehicle traffic, but pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, those sort of things. I think that we need to have a better plan for the future.
And maybe this transportation planner will be able to get those Harvey trucks off of our streets and onto the Mass Pike a little sooner.
Just a quick question. The hiring process, would that be similar to what we went through with hiring you?
For the board to hire from?
Or is that something you can just do directly?
I think it's an internal thing, it's not.
I don't know, I'm just curious.
My understanding is that I can, I would be involved in the hiring process. It would not have to go through a formal meeting. Although that was fun, but.
It's all you.
Do that again.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that, because I don't know if, because technically, the chair is head of the department. So I.
But it's usually.
Delegate that to the Director of Planning. So let's see what, I mean, hopefully, we don't get surprised with some convoluted process there, and you can just go ahead. Let's see if we can get the position approved first, so.
Start lobbying, go across the street then.
Exactly. They finally seem to be in favor of, for a new first. I don't know why, but certainly is nice to see.
There does seem to be support from the other offices for this.
That was really nice.
All right. Is there anything else?
I emailed Jenny today about the two buildings that are at the courthouse, they're being demolished.
Yeah, I heard that, I heard that those were sold, right?
It was sold, and there were, there already equipment out there demolishing them. Do you know anything about, I emailed her, because I don't know anything else.
Yeah, I did respond, so.
That's okay.
They are not being demolished right now. They're doing asbestos abatement, and they removed some trees. So part of the demolition process is that they need to complete the asbestos abatement first and have that done and certified before they apply to the building department for a demolition permit.
You're not gonna, you don't think? You're not gonna, you don't think the Historical Commission will delay that?
I don't think so. I did have a little discussion with someone about that. I thought to myself, is that going to have to come before the Historical Commission? Because they are, quote, historical buildings, however, they have been condemned. So I think in a situation where the fire department has condemned buildings, I don't think the Historical Commission can do anything about saving them.
I think Historical Commission will have to take a vote on that. I can't speak for them, but they, you know.
They're going to have.
This little building was.
They're going to have to, no, they're going to have to sign off on the permit, yeah.
And that, I think, was for the Historical Commission, right?
They had to take, they took out a bunch of trees.
Yeah, we did.
It's glad to see something down there.
But I thought that steam shovel looked to me like it was taking part of the building.
All right, we're getting sidetracked. Anything else?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. Thank you.